Good morning. I'd like to call the order the April 13th, 2021 Land Management Ordinance Committee Special Meeting of the Town of Hilton Head Island. Teresa, are we in compliance with FOIA?
Yes ma'am, we are.
Thank you. Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Scanlon?
Present.
Mr. Theodore?
Here.
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Ms. McGowan?
Here. Does staff have any changes to the agenda?
No, not at this time.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move.
Mr. Scanlon, do I have a second? Mr. Theodore, roll call please.
Mr. Scanlon?
Approve.
Mr. Theodore?
Approve.
Mr. Campbell?
Approve.
Ms. McGowan?
Approve. We have approval of minutes of our special meeting of December 14th, 2020. We have a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting held on December 14th, 2020.
I'll move.
Moved by Mr. Scanlon, seconded by Mr. Theodore. If there are any changes to minutes, please state them when called, otherwise vote yes to or no to approve the minutes. Teresa, please call the roll.
Mr. Scanlon?
Approve.
Mr. Theodore?
Approve.
Mr. Campbell?
Approve.
Ms. McGowan?
Approve. Item six, citizen comments. Teresa, have we received citizen comments on today's agenda items?
Yes ma'am. Citizen comments were submitted electronically via the open town hall portal. Those comments were provided to the committee for review and made part of the official record. Citizens could also sign up to give public comment during the meeting by phone. However, there were no requests to give public comment by phone. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will acknowledge we've received some substantive comments which we appreciate from the public. Our new business, discussion related to Design Review Board concerns regarding building height limits and setback in buffer standards. I think this is actually a continuation of a discussion we started a year ago before the pandemic set in, and I appreciate the DRB's patience in working their way back into our work program. And I thank Mr., is it gentleman? Is that the correct pronunciation?
Gentlemen, with a hard G.
Gotcha, gentleman. And Ms. Catherine Foss for joining us today. Would staff like to make a presentation?
Yes ma'am, we would. This is Chris Darnell. I coordinate with the Design Review Board.
Okay, thank you.
Give me just a quick minute. Can everybody see my screen now?
Yes.
I got it.
There are really, there are really three projects that, three projects recently, within the past three years, that have been of concern, excuse me, to the DRB. What I would like to do is just kind of run through those three projects, and then I'll let the chairman and vice chairperson address, and they can use, we can scroll back through these if they're, as they wish, if they, to make a point. The first one was, and the most recent, these go from most recent to the oldest. The most recent one is 11 Mitchellville Road, and you can see here the site plan, again, the property lines relative to the building on each side, and that becomes an issue, or was an issue, as stated by the DRB with regards to the building height. Again, I'm not, I don't want to put words in the DRB's mouth, but from the discussion, there was really no issue with the elevation and what the elevation looked like. The concern was the height of that elevation in relation to the property line. So you can see here some of the elevations of the building. This was approved. And as you may or may not know, new, new construction or new projects have to come through a conceptual and then a final review with the Design Review Board. As part of the final, the DRB required them to do, to illustrate a study of the building height in relation to the property line, and given that angled setback that's currently in the LMO. So you can, this is what, these two elevations or sections are what that is, so to speak. Of concern was the limited space with the fire lane for, for screening vegetation. The next one is 55, what we're calling 55 Gardner. Here's a site plan. It's the old Christian Academy location. Sort of elevations of the building as they are proposed. Sort of a bird's eye view of the project when it's built out. And again, the concern was the relationship of the height of the building to the existing road, given that area, which is very heavily treed, and there's not a lot of building up on the road. So this is another requirement, the DRB required another, a similar study here to illustrate that, that relationship. And you can see the angled setback that's required in the LMO here. The, the last one in the oldest project that was approved at the DRB was 15 Wimbledon Court, the old tennis court locations, location off Follyfield. Again, the concern was the building height and the distance between the buildings. So you can see the plan, the site plan here, with elevations of the different buildings, as many of them from the road. And then, again, the DRB was concerned and required a study, a streetscape study, to see what that was going to look like. So there was some additional planting required here because of this, this streetscape study, excuse me. And that concludes my presentation. I would turn it over to the, to the DRB members, and if they have any comment or want to reference specific slides they've seen, I'm happy to turn to them.
Thank you. Chairman, gentlemen?
Yes. Yeah, I'd like to add to Chris's narrative. This is Michael Gentman. I'm the chair, current chair of the Design Review Board. I've been, Teresa and Chris can probably correct my math, but I think I've been on the board for almost six years now, been five, I'm pretty sure. And you get, you know, nine out of 10 projects are fine, there's no problem, they're one-story, two-story stuff. But we, we get these massive projects, like you've seen, and there's one that somehow I forgot to add to my list, which I see pretty much every day, if any of you, if any of you come in the back gate of Hilton Head Plantation ever. The new boathouse addition is another one that should go on the record as part of the discussion. It's just, if you haven't seen it, you should drive by and see it. It's, it's 75 feet tall, it's in your face, and it met the LMO. So, so I encourage everybody to go by and see that one, too. That one's in person. You can kind of see what we're dealing with. But what the, you know, not to bore you with the details of the letter or anything, but what we come up against with the DRB is we really become paper pushers and ask people to change their roof slope. It's really what it comes down to, or add more plants. Because, you know, you can't fault a developer for getting their maximum square footage out of their property. That's what they're allowed to do. They bought the property with that in mind, and we do not fault that. But looking at these and, you know, weighing it with, you know, what, you know, go back to Charles Fraser, what he intended for sea pines, and, you know, should come out the gates of sea pines is, you know, architecture's background, living below the tree line, so on and so forth. You get down to, you know, you get down to the beach, and you got some of the hotels and things like that. That's a little different animal, I believe, and that's fine. But when you get into some of these, you get into some of these neighborhoods, Mitchellville's heading that direction, for sure. You get these, the Hilton Head Beach and Tennis is another one. You get in these neighborhoods that have two-story, maybe three-story buildings, and we're putting in five-story buildings that are as close to the setback as they can possibly be. One of the projects, and I had put this in my letter, was 55 Gardner, the Christian Academy site, and Mr. Theodore was on that one. And to his credit, he worked with us. They ended up pushing one of the buildings back a little bit, changing some slopes, things like that. So, so to different degrees, the applicants are willing to work with us, but as long as we don't cut their square footage, and, and it's really up to them if they want to or not. We, we can really just at that point dictate colors, try to make it look architecturally nice, you know, architectural balance, you know, more trees to hide it, that kind of thing. So if there is a way to bring down the scale, and I read all the, the citizen comments, and every single one of them pretty much says the same thing. North Forest Beach, they're worried about, you know, the, you know, the McMansions. Now, we don't review those. The residential houses along North Forest Beach is not part of our purview, but when it does come to the multifamily stuff, and any, and anything else, commercial-wise, falls in our purview. So if Ms. Foss would like to add anything, that's everything I have, and I'll hang out in case anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Michael. This is Kathy Foss. I'm the vice chair of the Design Review Board. I thought that Michael did a great job in putting the letter together. We sort of reviewed it, and everyone on the board felt like it was pretty thorough. One of the things that we try when we get these vertical buildings that are right on the setback allowances, we try to get buffers in there to try and break it down. But when you look at the angle setback, such as the one shown on Mitchellville Road, Chris, if you could pull up RB 13, the sheet, architectural sheet.
RB 13, there, there we go.
You can see that the buffer trees are on the far left of the picture, and then the setback allowance is not going to allow that little, the setback angle, pardon me, is not going to allow that little bush that's going to get thrown in there for a buffer against the building. It's not going to allow that to grow, or probably even succeed. The, the other issue, and when we talk about island character, Mitchellville and Fish Hall are two areas that, right now, we can still go there for the most part and see the island the way it was in its natural condition. And I think it will be a shock to the system when this building goes up, because it just, it's sitting right on the beach, it's sitting right up against the setback, and that, for the most part, that's the way the rest of the buildings are going. We had asked them to step down the front of it, and for the most part, they did in those two little buildings, right, if I remember right. But the, the same goes for the boathouse addition. It's 75 feet tall. They're building just within the allowances, and it doesn't allow us to try and figure out a way to kind of back up and make those better. If we're going to allow five-story high buildings, I would like to at least make it stepped back, so that we're not dealing with vertical walls that are taking away from the buffer and taking away from our ability to soften up those buildings. That's my two cents right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I guess I'll run through our committee members, and if you have any questions of the DRB representatives or staff, please, please give, start with Mr. Scanlon?
Would somebody remind me what the current angle is on the setback? What is our current, and for those maybe watching from the public, what is the current angle?
This is Terry Lewis. So it depends on the use, the, let me pull it up, and I'll tell you kind of what the range is to help out a little bit. So the range is between on, so adjacent to streets for non-single family, the range is between 60 degrees and 75 degrees. And then on adjacent use setbacks for non-single family, the range is 45 degrees to 75 degrees.
Thank you. I guess my question is, does the board want to recommend specific changes to that angle?
Are you, our board or your board?
Your board. You're the one here before.
Well, it takes, it takes study, obviously. I don't think there's a fix-all for everything. That's why it would need to be studied. I, I can't just throw a number at you. One thing we did put in the letter was to require interior buffers, which would help. And I'd like to hear Todd, Mr. Theodore's, comment on that. On, Ms. Foss pointed it out that, you know, we leave, they push parking and sidewalks right up, they being in general. They push parking and sidewalks right up against the vertical construction of the building, and it leaves no interior planting to soften it. You saw that little tiny, that little tiny bush that Ms. Foss pointed out that would never grow, even, even, even if they paint, plant it. So we requested an interior buffer, which may help remedy some of these situations. If they have to plan for an interior buffer, it may help scale down the building. Yeah.
Okay, that's all for this moment, anyway.
Thank you, thank you, Mike. Todd?
Yeah. Thank you, Michael, for your explanation on this. The, just out of curiosity, trying to understand the history, has, has anything changed relative to the LMO that has created some of these concerns, or do you think it's more associated with just current development?
I think it's the latter. I think it's current development. Because, you know, we're running out of, running out of land, you know. The town's been buying up parcels over the past number of years and preserving them, and this island is getting to the age where teardowns are happening. You know, everything's between 40 and 20 years old, and that's really when somebody can come in and buy the land, tear it down, and start over. So I think it's the age, it's the age of development that ran.
Yeah, well, that's what I thought as well. Do you feel like Design Review Board doesn't have enough sort of teeth to, you know, because you have an aesthetic authority over the project, and do you feel like at times, you feel it's not right, but it's within the LMO, but it's compromising the aesthetics, wouldn't you agree?
Absolutely. Yeah, I've been, you know, I've been a practicing architect for, oh my gosh, almost 30 years now, and I've been in front of boards all over the place. And ultimately, if you, if you follow, it didn't really matter what town you're in, city, if you follow the LMO, you always have your case. And if, if we reject something, like there was a very strong resistance to the, to the boathouse, and I think it narrowly passed, from what I remember. I don't hold me to that, but there was a lot of discussion on it. And, but it came down to the fact that if we had rejected it, and they appealed, we would have lost, we being the board. It, because they, they met the LMO, and that is the guiding factor. If, if they wanted to paint the building pink, and we said, no, it needs to be, you know, light gray, we can win that battle. But we can't, we can't win on the square footage battle, in the height battle. All we'll end up doing is, is wasting everybody's time and, and paying the lawyers, basically.
Okay, I got you. I was just trying to, you know, trying to think of ideas that would sort of find good common ground, because obviously, these teardowns are very costly, and the intent was to try to incentivize properties to reinvest. And obviously, it's expensive to, you know, to, to start off with tearing down a structure to build a new structure. Almost feels like, you know, maybe the setback, you know, adjusts, albeit, you know, I kind of struggle with that, because, you know, if a property doesn't have any trees on it, then that's a different scenario, because it doesn't really matter what the buffer is, it's, you know, it's, you're going to see it. And, you know, so in some situations, it makes sense, because you're pushing right up against the buffer, and an angle setback makes sense. But when you're starting out with nothing, you know, that's, you know, then obviously, you know, what you can do is require plenty of buffer plantings to try to get something started. The, and you're right about the separation between the buildings. Just trying to figure out if there's a way that, you know, there's a zone that when buildings start to enter into that zone, it becomes more an authority of Design Review Board from a aesthetic perspective that gives more strength to not, you know, get into a battle in the courts. You know, because in some instances, it sounds like if an architect properly addresses the building and can meet the aesthetics, then, you know, that becomes a little more acceptable, you know, working with, you know, the edges of setbacks and things like that. But if, if, you know, some of these buildings are really kind of pushing the limit, how to, how to get some authority in there, you know, then, and I'm just trying to understand, what is a comfort zone if you did spell out specific and angled setback that's, you know, running off at 45 degrees or something like that? Or is there, you know, based on floor heights, there's a, a factor of a setback, or, you know, that's, it feels like there's still probably a place to maybe put more authority in the Design Review Board to really weigh in on the aesthetics as well. So I'm kind of struggling with that, and really need, I feel like, need guidance from Design Review Board on, you know, what tools would give you all a comfort level and oversight on some of this as well.
Yeah, it's, you know, like I said, I, I don't fault any developer for trying to get everything, everything they can out of their investment. So, and there is no one-size-fits-all, as you pointed out. Some lots have trees, some don't. Some, some lots are on 278 in a commercial district, and some are in what, right now, were relatively quiet neighborhoods, but won't be soon, I think. So maybe there's a different district, or a different, you know, neighborhoods, or things where you can, you can build a five-story building one or two rows off the beach if you want to, but, you know, once you get on the interior side of 278 in the neighborhoods, maybe not. But that's not what's in place right now. So, and I'll, Ms. Foss had her hand up, so I'll, I'll be quiet.
I think it's, I agree that some more authority should be given to the Design Review Board as far as aesthetics. But I remember one of the comments that was given to us for the Gardner Road project, the owner basically said, if I can't have all those apartments in there, I'm not building this building. So what they did is design it according to the LMO, and can't, we, we were, again, our hands were tied. We made suggestions, some of them kind of went through, some didn't. But there, I think the LMO has to have something in there with the setbacks, and to stop someone from coming in and saying, this is the allowance I have. I don't think you can let them design a building that's, that is approved by the LMO, and then we come in and say, we don't like the look of it. I, I don't think that's possible to put in writing or make it authoritative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do, does the Design Review, with that said, does the Design Review Board have a sense of what that setback should be, where there begins to be a comfort level?
Yeah, well, it's, yeah, that, why, I'll give you the same non-committal answer. It would take some study. If the, if the site is 100 feet wide versus a site that's 75 foot wide versus one that's 200 foot wide, the answer's going to be different for every one of them, I think. The Mitchellville building that you looked at, it was a perfectly nice-looking building. The details are nice, everything's nice. But what, what caused that is they put a pool in the middle and did a horseshoe-shaped design. So it pushed the, it pushed those five-story tall walls just right up against, you know, right up against the property line. And just imagine, if you will, driving down that street in 10 years, and there's another one of those next door, and another one next door, and another one down from that. It'll be, you know, it'll, it'll, it'll be like, it'll be a giant wall. It'll be with, with a lot of dead plants in between them, because there won't be any sunlight. So, yeah, if I, if, if that were a three-story building, I think it would, it would fit nice in the neighborhood. Around Hilton Head Beach and Tennis, all those are two-story, some of them are three-story buildings. And now we're, we're putting a five-story building in. Maybe there's something in, in the neighborhoods that said, you know, you need to stay within the scale of the neighborhood. But again, it all depends on if you have a one-acre site or a four-acre site, and how, how close, you know. There is no one-size-fits-all. If the DRB had more teeth to also regulate scale and size, if there was something of that, then we could head some of this off at concepts, because they're, they're required to make two submittals, and we could say, no, it's, it's too tall. It's, we'll never tell them it's too short, but you gotta, you gotta move this back. But right now, we can't do that. So I think more teeth and interior, and interior requirements for plantings and setbacks would help. Yeah.
I think it's a good subject that was brought up also, in that we should seriously look at different neighborhoods. Mitchellville, for example, versus the beachfront. Maybe some rezoning is required.
We have, Mr. Campbell, Chance, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions at this point.
Okay. I just have a question. When you, when the DRB appeared before us in last February, you were really largely focused on the Caligny District and the Resort Development District. Does that still apply, or should we just?
I, I wasn't chairman, and that was probably Dale Strecker. I don't, I don't believe I was in that meeting.
No, no, you were not. You're not. I mean, the concepts, I think the concepts are similar. I think we'll, it's a year later, we pick it up from here.
And Madam Chair, this is Terry Lewis. If I could just add into that, so it started, it started with some requests from citizens for, for the town to explore some changes to the RD District, similar to what's in the Caligny Resort District, related to how the, there's a step back before the height can increase to a certain related to how the there's a step back before the height can increase to a certain amount. And and you're right, we then we had started those conversations, had some of the DRB members in to talk about that specifically related to the resort development and Culligny Resort Districts. And then, of course, COVID hit, and we kind of slowed down all of that. And now, as we've gone through this past year, we realize that it's definitely greater than just the RD District that it that similar concept, but expanded, you know, kind of throughout the island.
Okay, I mean, that's what I was getting. The I think the biggest concern, and I actually drove by yesterday by accident, the new boathouse addition. And you and just confirmed to me that that building met all standards, site coverage setbacks. It was all that. And and how high is that?
From what I remember, it was seventy-five feet tall, kind of at the midpoint of the of the roof or at the peak. Something the number seventy-five sticks in my head, and it looks and it looks that tall.
Looks taller even. Now, my, I I think it'd be great if the DRB could have more authority with regulating scale and size. But I'm I'm thinking, I I don't not that familiar with South Carolina Land Use Law, but is that something that's allowed? I don't know if anybody can address that, the staff know?
I doubt, but we can certainly check in with our staff attorney and find out.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's important to find out. But I think that the timing of this, after adopting the the new plan, you know, which which goes to maintaining island character, I think we're we are seeing that we're moving away with a lot of the recent development from maintaining island character. Five stories probably should be the exception rather than the rule in my in my aesthetic opinion. And it seems that we don't have floor area ratio requirements. And I don't know if that would help. And and the other thing that surprises me is that these sites all meet site coverage limitations because I know we're concerned about stormwater. But that that is all the factors that we should look at. Site coverage, height setbacks, density, floor area ratio. I mean, I know it's a a big undertaking, but I think it's pivotal at this point, the development of the of the island.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Scanlon.
Yes, a couple of things have popped into my head here. One is, as we were looking at that one, that one graphic where there was a small plant right up next to the building, it seemed to be there were taller trees out towards the road, I guess it was. Yeah, that one there up on top, top left, where you got the small little bush and the one right below it with the and you've got big trees there in front of it. It seems like we've got it bass ackwards and that we should be trying to set up maybe a setback angle for buffer shrubbery that that rises up to the the height or near the height of the building over time. But also, you know, with the with the shorter foliage in front and the taller trees and the like in the back, that that should be number one. Number two, and I've had this complaint before, parking in front of the building where you're looking at it from the road. If you have parking in front of the building, it's impossible to put the kind of buffer in there that you really want of of foliage. And so maybe we ought to, we can limit the size of these things by the rules on where we put the parking, I think, especially looking at it from the street. And maybe we should come up with a formula or maybe we should, the the board could recommend a formula whereby the the angles of of shrubbery buffer between the street and the building are based on the height of the building. In other words, if it's a three-story building, maybe this angle takes place. If it's a four-story building, it might be a more severe angle. That it would seem to me that, I'm no expert and I'm not an architect, but it would seem to me that somebody with that kind of background should be looking at these angles and making sure that the taller foliage is in the back, the shorter stuff is in the front. And we should not allow parking at the front of the building that should be, you know, buffer. The recommendations to us would be helpful so that we could maybe approve it based on some experienced recommendations.
Yeah. Todd.
Michael, I'm almost thinking of the opposite. And I don't know what Michael Gueneman thinks is if, you know, part, it wouldn't be as big an issue if parking was in front of the building because then the height of the building is being set back that much further from the property line. You have to be careful because you may end up forcing every building to be built up to the property line in the parking behind it. Now, that's kind of the urban style, but, you know, we're not, this is Hilton Head. It almost feels like it's really the proximity of the buildings and their size associated with their exposure to the edges of property in the public realm. And, you know, maybe there's, you know, one, it sounds like one of the issues is, you know, some of the zoning districts may be in question. You know, especially the areas that haven't experienced that scale of buildings. But the the LMO says that you can go to those heights and densities. And, you know, and I don't know what the, right now, you know, just we're throwing out ideas. Maybe there's some kind of overlay that begins to to take kind of a more specific look. And maybe there's definitions of different types of criteria that establishes when you're in an area with a smaller scale current development that there's some greater setbacks and things that get associated with that. And that within those zones, maybe there's more teeth that get defined for what DRB can say about that. And and maybe it, you know, there's a way to overlay with some of our resort development waterfront development where you become more region or localized specific with how those areas evolve based on their adjacent current development patterns. I'm just trying to come up with a way that that there's an LMO approach, but then there's also more teeth that DRB has to work with those parameters.
I have a question of a guess. And and you might not have an answer for this. But in reviewing these projects, is there any one regulation that just continually is the is the problem for you?
Well, I, yeah, I I think all these buildings, if they were, if you just lopped a story off each one of them, it would be more acceptable.
Then they have less parking and, you know, going down the line.
Yeah, and and Todd brought up a and and Mike brought up a good point about parking. You know, that's that hasn't even been part of our discussion yet other than what they brought up. You know, is it better to have a sea of parking in the building farther in the back or the building up front and the parking hidden? I think it all depends on what the building looks like myself. Some of them, some of them you want to hide. You know, and the the artist took creative license on that section we looked at with how tall those pine trees are right there along the gate. So you you can never take the artist's rendering for its word. But oh, there you go. There's a, that's the boathouse. But but I got a little bit off track. I I I really think if 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 there was a limit with very few exceptions, like if you're doing a hotel within one of the gated communities or something that's on the beach or down at Culligny, you know, maybe those are the couple of exceptions. You shouldn't really have a building on Hilton Head that's certainly not more than four stories. And four should be an anomaly, you know. Every three is 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 what it should be. Or if you're in a flood zone, parking plus three. I I just, the the one on Gardner Road, when that gets built, that's just, it's just going to be a it's it's going to look like a housing project. I mean, it's, all those are so close together. The wind tunnels that are going to happen between those buildings coming off the beach across the road, it's, you know, it's just going to be like a forty mile an hour winds constantly blowing between those buildings. That was not good planning, but there was nothing, not in no sorry, not Gardner Road, I'm sorry, Hilton Head Beach and Tennis. This one, this one, like I said before, the applicant worked with us on that one, and we got a, we got a few things. And they worked up front with the town on getting some of those buildings down to three-story sides. So and I'm not just complimenting Todd because he's on the call, but but they did that one right. The Hilton Head Beach and Tennis one was the that was Wimbledon Court. I get my addresses mixed up. That one was just just massive building right next to one another, you know. So it's, if all those were two stories shorter, it would have been better because that neighborhood's full of, you know, two, two and a half, three-story houses and things like that. So so, yeah, I would, I'd take the LMO and lop a story off of everything. You know, if you want an easy, if you want an easy fix, with the exception of a few special districts. Culligny, Culligny probably being one of them or within the gated communities, you know, where there's a Marriott or something, you know. So
Well.
But it's hard to, and we, I'm sorry, but we are, we are, we are just basically stewards of the people. Okay?
Right.
We took an oath to enforce the design guidelines. And that's what we try to do, but that doesn't always let us do what we want to do. So.
Yeah, I mean, what came to my mind is, I mean, we're now, the our plan goes to maintain an island character. And a lot of the examples you brought up are more of an urban character, not really the island character. So what is the sentiment of the board? Would anybody like to make a motion to provide direction perhaps of staff to embark on this?
Well, Madam Chair, the the chair suggested that this requires study. So I think we need to have somebody take a good close look at this and come up with some specific recommendation. I mean, saying that all buildings have to be four stories or smaller, I don't think that's the way to go. I I do think that we need to take a look at this thing and have some some rules that developers can go by so that they can design buildings in the future that don't run, you know, drive us crazy later. And one is, I I think parking is is underrated in terms of what we can do. And, you know, setbacks, you know, I look at South Forest Beach and the Oaks there, and I drive by it all the time. And I think one of the reasons that that people have a problem with that one was because it's fairly close to the street. And there's parking in front, which means your building's right in your face. And there's really not a whole lot you can do about it. And the foliage is, you know, you know, waist-high at the best in front of that building. And that's why I think it it shocks people when they see it. I think we need to start with a the size of the bill, the height of the building. We should have different angles, setback angles for the buffer of foliage and trees and the like. And we need somebody with expertise to perhaps study this and come back with some specific recommendations that we can pin down.
Todd comments?
I I mean, I agree. I think we need to have some study looking into this, maybe looking at other communities that are comparable with the same type of nature oriented atmosphere that Hilton Head has, tree protection. You know, a little devil's advocate, I I would say, you know, Charles Fraser, you know, gets references, you know, he was developer. You know, back in the day, there were probably similar projects, you know, just because new development obviously has an impact to vegetation. And, you know, we're comfortable, you know, fifty years later, looking at, you know, all the trees that have matured and buffered the developments. But there probably were times when some of these other areas were open. So finding that balance, I think. Because I hate to, you know, if we get to a point and we overreact and we scare redevelopment away, and especially the issue with affordable housing, you know, that these kind of things, you know, you hear affordable housing developers, you know, talk about the cost and how difficult it is to make some of these projects work and make it, you know, the the housing product into affordable price range. So trying to find all that balance. So it would be good, I think, to do some research, find some comparables and how other communities have dealt with it. I do believe that that, you know, we need to look at, you know, the setbacks, look at ways to increase the the buffers around the perimeters and the road frontages and that sort of thing. And try to figure out a way to give design review board some more authority. You know, because they're they're, it's unfortunate that, you know, that their oversight is island character and the aesthetics. But it feels like, you know, they're they're having to give in on some projects where if they, you know, just had a comfort level that they could dig their heels in and, you know, try to, you know, when a when a developer's not flexible and, you know, trying to work on the aesthetic side, that it gives design review board more authority to to try to control the aesthetics as well. And maybe, you know, what Michael's saying is maybe in some instances, some of these districts and and maybe it was mentioned earlier, you know, you know, looking at a granular level of some of these districts and maybe heights in some areas need to be evaluated.
John, any, you have any comments? Your mic's off.
No, I don't have any comments.
Okay, thank you.
Catherine.
Yes, yes, Catherine.
Thank you. One of the things that is in the design guidelines is that the building needs to fit within the aesthetics of the neighborhood. And one of the things that's kind of scary about we're talking about, I think we should have different zoning in these different areas. But then we put allowed a Mitchellville Road project to come in and to, we have to make sure there's some kind of wording to say that was a mistake because they followed the rules before, and that's not going to be allowed anymore. You know what I mean? Even the boathouse is changing the aesthetics of that neighborhood. And the Wimbledon Court will change the aesthetics of that. So if we look back and had those, then we've got developers saying, but look, you've got a five-story thing right on the beach in Mitchellville. Just a precaution.
I mean, I think if we have some, if we study this and find the need to address some of these bulk standards, it might actually develop the opportunity where with through the overlays we've been looking at that you can incentivize affordable housing through some, you know, some some trade-offs then, which just a, just a thought. I mean, we're we're at a point where we have enough examples that we can start a study to address and and take charge of the direction we're going.
Madam Chair, can I ask the group here assembled, who or what organization or what sort of a committee would be appropriate to do such a study? Is there some existing entity that we can use? Or do we need to create this from a whole cloth?
Anybody out there have an answer?
Well, the the, I wasn't part of it, but the the design guideline was written by an assembled separate committee. Is that correct, Chris? Do you know the history of that? I mean, wasn't it like Tom Cruise and some of the and I don't want to call him the old guard, but, you know, people that have been on the island for a long time. We would need, you would need a land planner like Todd and, you know, an architect and and probably a developer, you know, to be fair.
And some legal and some legal direction.
And some legal direction. So I think it's not something necessarily that the LMO board can do or just the design review board could do. But both should be party to it. But it needs, I think it needs to, and 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 staff obviously would need to be involved. You know, when, when a project comes to us, it has already been reviewed by staff as if it fits LMO, the basic LMO requirements. And so staff could review the LMO and make some suggestions, but I would not throw it all on them. You know, they're like, well, maybe, you know, if, if we change the angle from 30 to 45, what kind of impact does that have? And it would, it would impact neighborhoods A, B, and C. It might be nice to have that as a starting point, just a, just a revisiting, I guess, of the current LMO standards. Because my solution would be simple, but not popular, is just lower everything by a story. And, 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 and again, the interior setbacks, the interior planting requirements that's in our letter would help. Those would be my, my two suggestions if you're looking for a fix-all. But, you know, we're getting to a point where we want our cake and eat it too. You know, we want the, the lush green island that was envisioned 50 years ago, but we want the development too. You know, is there a happy medium? Like I said, that, we're at a point on the island where it's, the, the land is gone and now it's all tear down and rebuild stuff. So, and, and if you're going to make, if somebody's going to make that kind of investment, they're going to want to build as much as they possibly can, whether it's a vacation rental or housing or, you know, a dentist's office. So, sorry, I tend to talk too much.
It's good input. Excuse me?
Madam Chairman, if I might add something?
Yeah, I'm sorry, your, your screen is frozen, so I can't tell when you're.
Oh, okay.
So just speak.
You know, Michael brought up a good point. And, and yes, as, as far as I can remember, there was sort of a, a group that was brought together to, to look at the Design Review Board guideline booklet. You know, and maybe one of the, it, it maybe it happened, but I'm not sure, is maybe part of that would be to try to overlap and, and look at, you know, the influences that the LMO has with that, so that they're not two separate entities, that they kind of work together. So maybe that, that's helpful. And then I might add that, you know, one of the things that has happened in recent times that might fold into this is some of these residential developers that are developing multiple lots. There's some recent developments that I think slipped through without having Design Review Board oversight. You know, that they come in and they, they clear a site. There's an area over near Barker Field that's some residential back there and it's just wall-to-wall residential. And there's really no oversight. And to your point, Michael, like with interior, you know, buffers or landscaping between the residential or even really the, the, the buildings in the street. And, you know, maybe there, you know, the, I, I know that the LMO doesn't really regulate single-family development, but maybe that's the, the loophole that when somebody's coming in and developing 100 lots, there should be some oversight in the aesthetics of how that residential area gets developed over time. And that, you know, is put on the developer to address that because there's just some residential areas, I think, that are, you know, whether it's multifamily or single-family, that really aren't in character with the island as well. So I'm just pointing out that I think there's a loophole where, because it's single-family residential, but it's a developer coming in and doing multiple lots, that, that, you know, they, they put in the streets and they plant the lots, but then all the residences, you know, they're, they're, those aren't regulated in how they are handled and how they front their streets and all that kind of stuff. And even really the, the, the mass of all the buildings. But I'm just pointing out that there's two or three areas where there's multiple residential development properties that really aren't in character with the island as well. Barker Field's one example that, I mean, you know, you go near the, the waterfront area and look back, it really stands out. And I think is a problem as well. So I just throw that out there. There might need to be a way to address these commercial residential developments.
Well, I'm thinking that it might be a multi-pronged approach and I, I just, I just, my eyes just caught the, the summary of the DRB letter where they actually have set out three, three tasks that kind of might work. One is, is general, which might be done by the, a group that we were talking about, reviewing the allowable building height setbacks and buffers within the LMO, to determine if they are effective at maintaining island character. Two, which might be part of that group, is consider DRB's ability and jurisdiction to impose limits or requirements on situations where structures not keeping with island character. So that probably would be, be rolled into the first one. And then the separate one that probably could stay with the LMO Subcommittee and move through is adding a mandatory interior landscape buffer to the LMO. I don't know that that needs to go to outside of our staff to get that moving because that seems to be a continuing theme also in the DRB's comments. So actually, I guess it's a two-pronged approach. What, what, what's your opinion on that stat to the committee? Mike?
Scott?
That would be you, yes.
Okay. Well, I think the third one, you're right, we could probably handle within the LMO Committee and the Planning Commission. But perhaps we need a, a task force, and I don't know whether that would be under Town Council or
Right.
various elements we mentioned from the Design Review Board to our committee to a legal and so on and so forth. Maybe a temporary task force to sit down and come, come up with some specific recommendations based on zoning districts and, and the like and height of buildings.
Yep. Todd?
Yeah, I, I agree as well. Michael, can I, I have a question for you. I'm just trying to, out of curiosity, are you saying that in some instances, your board struggles as a group? You know, like say the boathouse, the boat storage building, that ultimately in the end, it was a majority vote that approved it?
Yes, I remember specifically the former chairman was not in favor of it and probably one or two other people. And, but we're a committee of five usually or more. What, what we, the way I try to regulate our board as chairman is I, everybody takes turns discussing and then sometimes we take a second round. And I try to get the applicant out the door with some sort of majority decision. As in if somebody wants to have conditions attached to their yes vote, then we usually do motion by committee almost on ours, where we may have five or six things that the person needs to change in order to get the DRB approval. So a lot of our votes are, I think we have seven members, are, are unanimous, six to one, five to two. But I remember in the boathouse, it was a little closer than that. So, yeah, it, it was not a majority vote, or it might have been a majority vote that had a lot of conditions attached to it.
And when you, when you're concerned about, you know, legal issues or that kind of stuff, if you reject something and the applicant disagrees, what, do they take it to the BZA or where does it go?
No, they take it to Circuit Court.
Oh, so it does go into the courts?
Yes.
Is that Terry Lewis?
It is, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, and we would, we would lose ultimately, not maybe not right away, because they're not doing something that the LMO disallows, so.
So you're looking, at least for the DRB, more an ordinance basically that helps define your parameters a little stronger?
Yeah, that's the only thing I can think of if we're, if we are more, you know, policemen than just paper pushers. Now, I don't want to, I don't want to minimize our impact on what we do because in all these cases, we had conditions. The Mitchellville one, for instance, we had them break down the scale of the corners and the, the stairs that they had and, and the buildings in the back, I believe. So, so they did comply with, with some of our things, but ultimately they didn't really have to. And if they wanted to expedite their project, they had to because we wouldn't have approved it. And then we would have had to go through the whole, you know, business of, of them getting what they want, which they would eventually get, I'm confident. But in order, like I said, in order to get everybody out the door and everybody playing within the rules, we spend a good amount of time on every project trying to get it approved within the rules and still do our job, you know, by making it look good, so as best as we can. You know, it's a, it's, it's, it's not an easy formula, but it seems to, for the most part, work. Every once in a while, we, you see something, go, oh my God, why did we approve that? It happens, you know, it happens.
Thank you.
Thank you. Question to, to staff, I get, I don't know if that would be to Terry Lewis or Chris Darnell. Do you, either based on your past experience or how you see this working, have any suggestions for the idea of studying this matter?
This is, this is Terry Lewis. I don't yet, I would say, so this is going to move forward, this topic is going to move forward to the Public Planning Committee meeting at their April 22nd meeting at 3:00 PM to just have a similar type discussion and get some feedback from that committee on what they've been hearing in the community and what they've heard as well, from the Design Review Board and from others related to a similar type of topics and what they've observed. So I would say that we would want to get through that first. And then any kind of, whether it's going to be a task force or some kind of, you know, another committee or something like that, that would certainly have to go through our town manager and council.
So should we be making a recommendation to the Public Planning Committee then, based on our deliberations today?
At this point, I don't think you have to make a recommendation to that committee. I think just a recommendation in general as to what the LMO Committee thinks would be the correct path forward.
Okay.
But I would certainly invite you or other members of your committee to attend that, that meeting as well.
All right, so hearing that, do any of the board members have a suggestion how to craft a summary of our? Mike, Scanlon?
Madam Chair, I think I would move that the, the Planning Commission, this committee, LMO, recommend to Town Council and the Public Planning Committee that we, that they set up the task force that would include the DRB, the LMO Committee, various staff and legal expertise to put together some recommendations on a zoning district basis level as to how to approach the first two bullet points brought up by the DRB.
All right, and do I have a second on that?
I'll say it.
Okay, some discussion. Do we want to direct staff to look at the regulations and maybe draft an amendment for mandatory interior landscape buffers?
I think after that committee meets, if that, after that task force meets, I think that's appropriate.
My, my concern was how long it's going to take to get through the task for where the, where the interior landscape buffers seems like it would have.
You mean in terms of the, what our committee would do, the bullet point number three? We can do that and, and, you know, the staff can make some recommendations on bullet point number three for our group.
Exactly. Would that be a separate, I guess that would be a separate motion.
Fair enough.
All right. Any, any further discussion on that motion? If not.
I have a second from Todd, I think.
You do, you have a second from Todd. So Teresa, can you call the roll?
Certainly. Mr. Scanlon?
Yes, I approve.
Mr. Theodore?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Approve.
Ms. McGowan?
Approve. All right. Do I hear a motion concerning the third bullet?
I would move, Madam Chair, that with regards to the third bullet, that, that staff prepare for us some suggestions or recommendations to what this committee could do to solve that particular problem.
I'll say it.
Does it second? Is that Todd?
Yeah.
Who's still frozen? Any discussion? If not, Teresa, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Scanlon?
I approve.
Mr. Theodore? Mr. Campbell?
Approve.
Ms. McGowan?
Approve. Okay, thank you very much for taking your time, Catherine and Michael. Really appreciate your, your input. And hopefully we'll get somewhere with this.
All right, thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, under committee business, everybody still there? Let's see, anybody there? Our April 21st LMO Committee meeting has been canceled. And there's, with no other business before the committee today, I will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, gentlemen, and.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, good discussion.
Yeah, have a, have a good day. Bye.